I did all that and I wasn't, I was, I was not muted, huh? Great. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to welcome you all to the Dania Beach City Commission Virtual Workshop for the Regional Activity Center Allocated Units. Today is Wednesday, September 8th, and it is 5:01 PM. Call the roll, please.
Mayor James.
Here.
Vice Mayor Savino.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Rodman.
Yes.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Hansbrough.
Here.
So, the first, the person-only item is for discussion and possible action is the Regional Activity Center Allocated Units. I guess I'll turn it over to City Manager.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Today, we will be having a presentation by our Deputy Director of Community Development. So at this time, I am going to turn this presentation over to Corinne LaJoins. Corinne?
Thank you, City Manager. I'm going to share my screen with you all, so you can see the presentation I have together. Let's see. Okay, there we go. Hopefully, we can all see that. And what I'm going to start is, I'll try to, there's areas I'm going to try to make brief and then areas I may need to linger and talk about a little bit, but I'm going to start where we, the conversation that we had at the last City Commission meeting about our rack units. There we go. Okay, so, you know, as I stated before, that we've had various redevelopment initiatives that were initiated by the city. The first that I recall, anyway, I'm sure there was other efforts, started with Florida Main Street, and that was primarily a designation along a federal highway and incorporated a lot of our historic districts or our historic buildings, and it was a way of establishing a unique location that was Dania Beach. Later, we got more sophisticated and established the local activity center. This area is 160 acres in size. It was also along federal highway, but it went to the railroad tracks and then extended east primarily along East Dania Beach Boulevard. That's how we get the 160 units. And this was established as a land use designation in our comprehensive plan, so we'll talk about that more a little bit. Following that, seven years later, we saw how the importance of the, of the local activity center and how we could be utilized as a tool. So it was expanded to create the Regional Activity Center in 2010, and that expanded the area to 2,000 acres. And this is what we have today, and it's primarily east of I-95. It's, it's federal, the entire length of federal highway within the city and stretches along East Dania Beach Boulevard as well. So it's, it's much expanded at this point. Both the local activity center and the regional activity center are land use designations identified in the city's comprehensive plan and within the city's future land use element. So I'm going to take a moment to talk about the comprehensive plan a little bit, and it's, its basis is regulated by state statute, and it's identified as a comprehensive plan that shall provide principal guidelines, standards, strategies for orderly and balanced future economic, social, physical, environmental, and fiscal development in an area, in our case, a city, that reflects the community's commitment to implement a plan and its elements. The comprehensive plan is also known as a general plan or a land use plan, and it's a document that guides the future actions of the city or the county. The comprehensive plan presents a vision for the future with long-range goals and objectives for all activities that affect local government. So I'm going to go through briefly the little chapters or elements of our comprehensive plan, so you understand how comprehensive it really is and all the different areas it does touch. So the first is the future land use element. That's the part that we're going to talk about tonight. That identifies the general development pattern of the city. It's also where the Regional Activity Center is designated on the future land use map. We also have a housing element, transportation element, sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, potable water, natural ground resources, aquifer recharge element. We have a coastal element, a conservation element, recreation and open space, intergovernmental coordination, capital improvements, monitoring and implementation element, public schools facility, and moving forward, we're going to create a resiliency element as well. We do need to do an update. We're going to be preparing that next year, and our update is due in 20, in 2023. So over the years, we have had amendments made to the comprehensive plan. The state requires an evaluation and appraisal report every seven years. In 2016, we were able to submit a statement to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity stating that there was no need for changes. There were no regulations that changed that affected our comprehensive plan, so really no changes occurred in 2016. We know that this is due for our city in 2023, so like I said, next year, we're going to be looking at and reevaluating all the components of the comprehensive plan and updating it where necessary. Part of the comprehensive plan in our, our capital improvements plan is our water supply plan for the city. In 2005, the state legislator enacted significant changes related to water resources to address the state's water supply needs, requiring a stronger link between the regional water supply prepared by the water management districts and the comprehensive plans prepared by the local governments. So this requires that Dania Beach identify how the future water supply will be met for the next 10 years, the preparation of the water supply plan. Most recent updates to the South Florida Water Management District, which is regulates the water in our area, was conducted in 2018. So now that they've completed theirs, we have to update to make sure our plan is consistent with the South Florida Water Management District. We're in the process of doing that, and we hope to get it before the City Commission soon. We're, we're coming to the end of that study, so we're very close to having that completed. Just from this one activity, the, the water supply plan, it's going to require updates to our future land use element, our sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, potable water, natural groundwater element. It's going to require changes to the conservation element and capital improvement element. So that just illustrates how one activity could affect so many different facets of, you know, of government, and that will be identified in the comprehensive plan when we do our updates. Going back to our land use categories with regards to our, our local activity center and our regional activity center. The local activity center was established as a result of the Slum and Blight Study that was established, which established the need for redevelopment efforts and created the regional, the CRA at the time. The intent was to attract redevelopment in the area in an urban mixed-use form, and it was really intended to put feet on the streets. It was created around a five-minute walk or quarter-mile, both for the walk and for development within the regional, within the train station in hopes of getting mass transit or any bus lines. So it was really that quarter-mile focus, which is why it was a smaller area. And these were the units and development caps that were established for this rack. Remember that it was 160 square acres, I believe. So then, when we came back, following the success of the local activity center, the city expanded their land use designation to create the Regional Activity Center. And this also was established through a slum and blight study, allowing for the expansion of that redevelopment effort and an update of the CRA plan. And you can see the orange area is the CRA designation and land use designation. The intent of the regional act, of the Regional Activity Center is to encourage and attract functional, mixed living, working, shopping, education, recreation activities. So it's essentially our live-work-play policy in a land use format. That's what this is intended to do. And because the area increased, we're up to 2,000 acres now, so did the numbers, because it could accommodate more. Maximum intensity established by the local activity center and the regional activity center are established by feasibility studies. So it's not some arbitrary number that we look at. It ha, we have to be able to justify how the level of development will affect our infrastructure, will, how it will affect our roads. Do we have enough water capacity? Do we have enough schools for the homes that are being built? And affordable housing supply, this is something that has been, it was looked at in the past, but it's much, it's going to be looked at more closely now. There's new state legislation that's going to require this analysis for any expansion going forward. So, kind of to summarize what we had, as you know, the local activity center was a smaller geographical area, so we had fewer numbers. We had a total of 2,565 units at that time. The Regional Activity Center, it's much larger, it's 2,000 acres, and it had 7,818 units when it was established. Currently, we're down to 1,278. I have an application that's going to be before the commission on the 28th in a couple of weeks for Dania Point. They're asking for another 400. So that brings me to a total of 878 dwelling units. That's 11% of what was originally established with our rack. So that's kind of where we are today.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Um. How, do you know how many units that we gave out that have not?
I have all kinds of information I'm going to get to. Yes. I have a whole bunch of information about the assignments and where they, where those units went. So I can tell you that this slide is showing you just in the past 24 months, how busy we've been. We've allocated 28% of our unit count in the past 24 months. So our interest has picked up, but if you look, it's not that many projects, but the size of the projects have increased substantially. So each project's taking a bigger and bigger chunk as they come through, recently, anyway. And of the units that have been assigned and allocated in the past two years, the ones in yellow are the ones that are not yet constructed. The other ones are actually existing or being constructed currently. So the ones that are yet, not yet under construction is about 14% where we are now. Make sure I'm not skipping a slide. Okay, so this slide shows where the allocation of the units have happened in the city. The red outline is the Regional Activity Center. Now, the Regional Activity Center does go all the way down to Sheridan Street, but we don't have any residential projects to the south, so I zoomed in so you could kind of see better where we are at. So, I took, I have a whole bunch of notes, and there was a couple of things that I wanted to point out to you specific for this graphic. So this is federal highway that runs down the center. It's kind of the spine of the city. And this is Dania Beach Boulevard. So this is kind of our main and main street. This is our crossroad. It is the heart of our downtown. As you can see, the units have been pretty much dispersed along Dania Beach Boulevard corridor. There's been some along federal highway. And then we also have the third spine, which is Bryan Road, and we know that's due to the creation of Dania Point mostly. And some interest recently about redevelopment parcels on the, on the east side of Bryan. The properties in yellow are the projects that have been allocated units but have not yet constructed. The ones in blue are the ones that are constructed or in the process of being constructed today. So that's kind of where we're at. So this is just a reminder that even though we entitle projects and we allocate units, there's a delay, sometimes a significant delay, and when those units actually get in the ground. But that still ties up the units. We never get them back because of the executive orders that are being granted out of Tallahassee. If we follow the land use regulations, our site plans are valid for 12 months, and they can be extended for another year. But the executive orders from the governor extend these projects indefinitely, and they get locked up forever. So that's kind of where we're at now. Let me make sure I'm not skipping. Um, shoot, sorry. I know. Okay. This breaks down again, my built and not yet built projects. So you can see, we have 1,600 units on the ground or under construction today. That's 35% of our rack. 64% is not yet built, but already allocated. So we have a lot of units that are tied up in entitlements that, that are just waiting, kind of in a holding pattern. I also did a breakdown of the units on the east and west side of federal highway. So for the units on the east side of federal highway, those are over here. It's about 40% of our rack allocation. For the west side of federal highway, I broke it down even further. The top portion, 54%, this is west of the C-10 canal. So this is along the Bryan Road corridor. 54% of our units are there. For the east side of C-10 canal, this is between C-10 canal and federal highway. It's 5% of our units. And these little asterisks identify affordable housing projects, just so you can keep that in mind. The, of the projects that are not yet built, there are almost 3,000 units that are tied up in entitlements. Now, the, as you can see, in the years that they're entitled, these range from 2004 is my oldest to just recently, like with the wave, Dania Point had entitlements in 2016, and they're getting, asking for more at the next commission meeting. So the, the dates vary. I have a lot of 13, 14, 2014, 2012. This is just illustrating that once they're entitled, at the moment, they're gone and we're not getting them back because of the governor's executive orders. And again, I noted the affordable housing with Saratoga Crossing. That's where we're at with our entitlements and where those units are, are, have been allocated so far. I wanted to share this slide with you because we get calls on a daily basis, and these projects on the screen are just the recent inquiries that we've had in the past couple of weeks. We're almost at 2,000 units of inquiries. I have 878 to distribute. So that's kind of where we're at now. There's still a demand, and we have a dwindling, dwindling supply. So this map overlays where the location of those interested, you know, the anticipated projects that we've recently had. It accounts for like a potentially almost 2,000 more. What's interesting about this is if you look, again, we're looking at Dania Beach Boulevard and federal highway. These units are, are, seem to be concentrated mostly on Dania Beach Boulevard, both east and west of federal, but they're not encroaching into the neighborhoods. You can see the neighborhoods here. They're, they're happening on the outskirts. Our neighborhoods are being preserved. There's another map that I'm going to show you, showing the zoning district, and that's kind of the reason why these neighborhoods are being preserved, because they are being clustered in our more intense zoning districts. It's a city center. That's where we want the development to occur. That has a higher density. So this is just kind of establishing the pattern of where we're at and the status of the projects. This is the zoning map I was referring to. This area here is the city center. My key over here identifies that the density for the city center zoning district is 50 up to 150 units with incentives. So there's a lot of intensity here, and that's where you're going to get your larger projects. When you look here, the neighborhood residential, that's our neighborhood, those are our neighborhoods. Those densities are limited to one, two, maybe three units. That's why we're not going to get these types of larger-scale site plans in these areas, because the zoning doesn't allow it. But our mixed-use zoning districts have more density. I think we're up to like 50 units per acre in these districts. This is Dania Point and the small-scale planned mixed-use developments. They kind of establish their own land use patterns and densities, and they do allow higher density. So we're getting more projects out here with those larger plans as well. Okay, so, um, this is kind of like a, sort of a summary page. I have 878 dwelling units remaining. My average project size is about 267 units. I mean, our projects have been getting larger. At that size, we have, you know, units remaining for three or four more projects, and then our bank is empty. So the replenishment of the rack is possible. It's part of our land use plan or comprehensive plan, so it does require action from the city, county, and state. So it's going to take 12 to 18 months to go through that process, to see it to fruition. Once the rack dwelling units are depleted and we have no more, that means no more site plans, no more residential. We can still have commercial and office development, but our residential development, once we're out of units, is, is at a halt. That means no more single-family duplex townhomes, even affordable housing projects. If we have no units to assign to the projects, they can't happen.
That's only in the RAC, right?
It's only in the RAC. West of I-95, there's no limit at this, at the moment. You're correct. So in order to have a more device, diverse housing type offered in the city with more, more units and more housing projects are needed. Increasing the number of units in the rack will enable a variety of housing types to be built, including affordable and workforce housing. More development will also allow diversity in rental versus ownership of units as well. The vision of the city's comprehensive plan and the CRA redevelopment plan has always been to create the walkable community to live, work, and play in Dania Beach. At this time, what we're recommending is kind of twofold. The first is staff strongly recommending that the City Commission establish a temporary zoning in progress of sorts in order to determine how to allocate the remaining units. The second is staff would like for the commission to direct staff to request an additional dwelling units to replenish the rack, not to exceed 4,000 units. So I have one more slide that kind of breaks that down in my rationale for each of those recommendations. The first regarding the zoning in progress. It would, it's envisioned only to be a temporary halt for a few months to allow staff to determine a method for distributing the remaining RAC units. The way we've progressed so far is a first-come, first-served basis. And at this point, I don't want there to be a mad rush to our city hall doors trying to get in just to get, use up the last of our 800. I'm thinking maybe we need a more thoughtful approach. Maybe we should look at the use of incentive bonuses. Maybe that should be temporarily halted. You know, why would we throw additional units at a project when we have so few to share? Maybe there's also locational requirements. Maybe it's more important to concentrate the units in the city center or along East Dania Beach Boulevard. So I think I'd like to take a moment to find a way to prioritize the distribution. The second recommendation is for the increase of the rack units, and we established the not to exceed 4,000 units, because that's a sustained usual number that we can, can be utilized using best practices associated with the current water supply plan that we're currently working on, which also includes the use of the C-51 reservoir. So that plan will be able to accommodate this 4,000-unit addition. In addition, like I shared with you, we have reached the inquiries that are almost 2,000 units. So establishing a 4,000, I think, is a good number. This isn't something we want to go back and ask for every year. So I think the 4,000 number is a good number for us to get through the current, you know, what's currently coming in and the interest, and still sustain us beyond that. Not all the units, as we know, will be built, certainly even after entitlement. As we see, we currently have entitlements of almost 3,000 units that are entitled and not being built. They're kind of in a hold pattern. So if that 4,000 is kind of a scary number, know that that's not all going to happen tomorrow by any means. Even if they are approved through site plans, there, there tends to be, you know, a percentage that gets held, and they just hold the entitlements for a period of time. I think that concludes my presentation. So I'm available to have conversation, to listen, to answer questions. However, you'd like to proceed beyond this.
All right. I see Vice Mayor has his hand up. Vice Mayor, I gotta find it.
Okay, I'm here. Hey, Corinne.
Hello.
So, a couple of questions for you. I noticed the zones you had, updated zones, consisted of federal highway up to Sheridan Street. Is that correct?
The CRA includes all of that area, the Regional Activity Center, yeah.
So, so we have discussed a lot, I think, on one of the meetings, I think the last meeting in general, there was some conversation about some of the people that were complaining about the property on U.S. One and being able to, with zoning, we were going to talk about changing around, so they couldn't go back, because we have not been in the residential area. So if we expand these units out, they could possibly go down into residential areas off of U.S. One from Sheridan Street up to Dania Beach Boulevard. Is that correct?
I'm going to say no, because this is not a rezoning. We're not changing the single-family zoning districts that exist. This would just increase the number of units that are available for redevelopment in the Regional Activity Center. So the properties that are currently zoned mixed-use, like along South Federal Highway, now, if they wanted to build a residential building, there would be units available for them to do so.
They would be, right. Somebody could go in there and buy a block of area on Southwest Sixth Street, and they could build, they could put a 100-unit residential unit there if we had more, more units, is that correct?
The South Federal Highway mixed-use zoning has a maximum cap of 50 units per acre with incentives. So they would not be able to exceed that, and then depending on whether we, you know, temporarily put a, a hold on the incentives, the assignment of incentives might knock that number a little lower. And the development would occur only on the property that's zoned South Federal Highway mixed-use. It is not the entire residential block. It's just the parcel on the east side of that block near, near federal.
Okay, we'll chat on that later in the zoning part of that.
Okay.
The other thing is, on the, on the incentives as well, the incentives, are we allowed to stop giving incentives for the height of the buildings and so on? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that would be something that we would look at and potentially, if necessary, change the, the zoning text to allow us to do so.
Okay, because I would think that some of the people that have purchased the properties with those incentives, incentives that were available on the time of purchase, they would be grandfathered in to be able to use those incentives, and we would not be able to retract them at that point. Is that incorrect?
Well, it's true, yeah. Eve, I see, is here. Well, it's true for the projects that have already been entitled. So the projects that already have approved site plans, those are locked in. But for the ones who have vacant land and are ready to redevelop, that's not a buy-right number. That's what could be achieved if they are able to reach certain parameters. But I'll let Eve speak to that as well.
I, I know that people have bought property, and I guess as you're saying, the site plan is not in, that it doesn't work as well, and they can't use the, it's okay.
Reality, if you don't mind, the, the challenges are weaker if they don't have an application in. So that, we are a property rights state, so there are some protections for developers. But, but that being said, they have to actually have been acted upon. And one of the things is, if we're changing our code, they have a certain amount of time to challenge what we're doing in our code.
Right. Well, the reason, I'm, you know, I understand that. That's, that's, that's great that it goes that way, because I also know that every time that we had brought up back, and when I was on the commission six years ago, we had tried to take the one year, if they weren't, if the site plan wasn't approved, or they didn't commit development, we were going to go back to the way it was, and the governor kept extending it, like you said, and I guess that'll never ever change. So by saying that, it'll never change.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but one of the things we're talking about with Corinne, and we've actually talked with developers, and some developers are actually supporting, is a separate agreement outside of the development order that would restrict, the property owner would self-restrict himself as part of the approval from seeking extensions under the government's, the governor's orders. And that way, we could get the pullback, but that's only going forward. We can't do that with the ones that have already been vested.
Okay. All right. Just, those are some questions. I think I have a couple more, but I'll share my time with everyone else. Go. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, that, I think that was part of my question there, was for the, my concern for the unused units. And part of the zoning in progress plan that you're, that you're wanting to implement for the three to six months, that there be some kind of regulatory scheme for that, for those, for use, for the units to go back into the pool if people, if the developers, you know, use them, or if the develop, if the developers don't use them. So I'm guessing, what I'm trying to say is, I want to make sure that we don't continue to have unused units that aren't going back into the pool, and if that's part of the process. And did we have any regulations prior to this that would make them give, give the units back?
We really don't have a process for getting those units back because they're tied up with the entitlements. But we do have this pot of units that are allocated. So, I mean, I'm starting to think that maybe we share the information and we allow a new developer to speak to the old developer and say, hey, if you don't have a need for these units, would you, you know, could we reassign them? So that's a possibility, but there has to be willing partners on both sides. So I think that's something we have to explore further. Thank you.
Um, I, I have a few, a few questions or concerns. So I'm, if I'm correct, your recommendation is for us to allow 4,000 additional units just in the Regional Activity Center. That is not including all the projects that have been approved and constructed and not constructed, correct?
Correct, we're asking, I'm asking for you to direct us to go forward requesting an additional 4,000 units.
And how many units would that put us at in total? From what we had before and what we would be requesting now?
Well, we have, I think the number is 878, so that would give us 4,878.
Okay, I guess I was.
You're not asking for 4,000, you're asking for additional 2,000.
No, I was hoping to not exceed 4,000. And just so you know, if we move forward with the 4,000 number, we still have to do a feasibility study. We believe we can meet the water demands of the project. I don't think trips and schools are going to be an issue. I believe that they may, the state may require us to maintain a portion of those additional units for affordable housing. But I think we're able to substantiate and prove that we can, our infrastructure is compatible for those additional 4,000 units. If they find that they're not, that number might be adjusted lower to be able to meet our ability to supply those services for those units. But I was thinking 4,000 was a good place to start.
So why is Tom said 2,000?
I don't know, except that I did say the 2,000 number because currently we're picking up the phone and we're talking to people and the projects that they're talking about adds up to about 2,000. So like I said, this isn't something, this is a long process. It's 12 to 18 months. It's not a process that we want to do every year or even every other year. So I'm thinking if we get 4,000, that's going to hold us for a good period of time. It will accommodate some of our current, the desires that we know that are currently out there. And there's also additional projects. There's a trailer park on Federal Highway that could redevelop. I mean, there's other projects that they will need units for. And if we don't have them, then we're kind of back in the position we're at now where we're carefully looking at how we allocate those units.
No, I understand that. I guess I, I look at everybody and, you know, the things that we say to the communities and things of myself and, you know, understanding the need to balance development and your revenues and how your city functions. I am just not sold on allocating or going to the county to ask for 4,000 units just east of 95. You know, our constituents have already been very clear to us that, you know, they already feel like the projects that we are approving, that we are overdeveloping. And these projects are not one in a million, one of a kind. They are the same type of structures, the same type of rents, the same types of projects. There's, there's nothing innovative that makes me comfortable in being able to support 4,000 units being crammed here. Right now, we're, I mean, you can look at the properties from 2004 and the other one, I think, that had 200 units, that was a while back. But when we're looking at units that are currently, or development or projects that are currently being approved, they're shovel-ready. They're what we would consider, we wanted to approve years ago, you know, when we had people come in and not develop. And I am afraid that we are going to look like an overbuilt community. We are, we are not careful because everyone is building rentals. There are, there are no condos being built. There are no, there are very little, you know, home ownership units that are being built. They're all rentals, they're all small, they're all expensive. And so I, in good conscience, cannot support going back and asking the county for 4,000 additional units just east of I-95. I think if it was the entire city, that I would be more comfortable with that. But 4,000 is a big ask for me. You know, I understand that, you know, we, we do have a lot of other projects that are coming on board and, and some that we may want to support. But just because people are coming with a paper and applying for a project doesn't mean that that's what's in the best interest for the residents of the city. When I was first elected, we had a huge issue with water supply. And we are still, you know, we are still dealing with the water supply issue. And to now add 4,000 units on top of that, I, I, those are just my comments. I'm just not, I'm just not comfortable with that number. I don't know if anyone else wishes to speak. I don't see anyone's hands up or hands raised. So I know we've heard from three of us. Nothing from anyone else? Okay, so Corinne, what are you looking to get? Because I can't, it's hard for me to see all of, Commissioner Davis, you trying to put your hand up? Go ahead, if you, okay, go ahead. I can't hear you.
Yeah, I did have an initial concern about the 4,000 units. And so, but I, when I listened to you said that you were going to be able to go back and make sure, I wanted to make sure that the infrastructure would be able to sustain that. What, do we have something before we went ahead and asked for that to ensure exactly what our infrastructure is capable of handling? So that would be my major concern before we ask for 4,000 units to find out what we can actually handle and what would be feasible.
Yes, well, leading up to this workshop, I'd been speaking with Fred Bletcher, who's our consultant working on the water supply plan. And he's close at resolving all of the issues and getting final sign-offs. And he said that his numbers do account, do include additional 4,000 units. So once we are able to get that water supply plan finalized, which I'm told we're very close to doing, we'll have the capacity for those 4,000 units, so that won't be an issue going forward.
Thank you.
Hold on, let's see, Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes, thank you. Corinne, you've mentioned that Dania Point's going to be coming to the next meeting seeking a certain number of additional units.
400, yes.
Okay, is that, and I may have missed it on your charts before, but that 400 is already allocated from what we have currently? Or is that going to, are they going to need additional units other than what we already have allocated?
Well, right, so my unit count, I gave you two numbers. I did my 878 units that remain do already deduct that 400 for Dania Point. So I'm assuming that because it's on the next agenda, that I'm assuming it's going to be allocated to Dania Point. So that number is real, the 878 units.
And then my other question is, is what you're asking is a not to exceed 4,000 units?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, and that's just, and even if this is something that we decide to go with, it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to be able to use 4,000. It just gives us the breathing room that in the event that we need additional units and the infrastructure is acceptable for it and the county approves it and the state approves it, then it would be there for us. It's not saying that we're definitely going to be able to go with that.
Well, right, I mean, if we go through the feasibility study and it gets approved from the county and the state and we get the additional 4,000 units, that replenishes our Regional Activity Center pot. We, that still brings us back to where we are today. When a site plan comes in, it still has to go through the DRC, the technical review. It still has to go through the public hearing process. It still gets presented to the city commission for approval. So you are still the ultimate gatekeepers as the city commission. But without those units, we can't even entertain the development.
Right, but what I'm saying is even if, okay, let's say we were to tell you, yes, you could have your, no, no more than 4,000 units. You would still, you still have to go through several different processes to get that approved, correct?
Right, just right. You saying, yes, we agree not to exceed 4,000, that will begin our process. We're going to do the feasibility studies, we're going to do the analysis, make sure there's schools, roads, water, affordable housing to meet all the state requirements. Then we have to go through the county for approval and the state for approval, right?
So in the last time that we asked for additional units, did we get everything we asked for or we only got part of it?
I believe the, I don't think we got everything we asked for. I think it, part of that feasibility study, those numbers ended up getting adjusted. I know that at, in, previously, schools were a big issue. We were, they were critically overcrowding of schools, so that was a big issue at the time. I think now it's more water and affordable housing are the pressing issues at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
If I can, also, you may want to, as part of this process, look at our code and how we allocate and see if there are any other restrictions we want to add in, particularly, let's say, a greater allocation if you actually meet affordable housing and maybe, or lesser affordable housing, if you follow me, to more low-income housing versus affordable housing.
Or workforce or whatever.
Put more criteria in for you to evaluate before giving out the calculations, should you decide to do so.
Well, that, I mean, that's one of the things that I know is in the budget for this year is to do an overall assessment as to housing. And I'm wondering if we maybe need to have that done before we can actually move forward to something like this to get a better sense of it so that we can put in there what our criteria are.
And if you do decide to do that, you may want to do something more than just the zoning in progress initiates with the advertising for the zoning in progress. Meaning, once you advertise, anybody coming in with an application after that advertisement is published has to apply with to the new rules. Where, but if you don't do that, you know, then anybody coming in is going to seek those numbers, right? So, but you may, if you need more time than the three months and you want to evaluate the housing stock and you want to evaluate all of those rules, you may want to do a moratorium in addition to the zoning in progress just so you have the time to really evaluate and put into place what you're looking for. And not get a question to the courthouse kind of thing.
And that'll go to my question to the city manager. Manager, what, where are we as far as moving forward on doing that assessment, that housing assessment?
This is something that we're going to be addressing in the new fiscal year. When I was talking earlier today with Candido, we were going over the presentation, one of the things that concerned me that going back to 2004, we have people holding on to units. I don't remember which one of your colleagues, or it may have been Corinne, that talked about on federal highway, the, what we have there in regards to the trailer park that we have there, the discussions that I've had with each and every one of you about more affordable housing, if we need it, more workforce housing if we need it. But the 4,000 units or not to exceed have to go through so many layers, not just the city, but the county and the state. And before, what we submitted was reduced. So this is just the number that Corinne says based on us speaking to the subject matter experts that include professional planners and also Fred Bletcher, who is our waterman. So at 4,000, I would see chances are that we may get it reduced from the county and the state. Another problem that we were having in the past were that our schools were overcrowded. That has changed now. With more school options, some of our schools are actually under-enrolled. So there's a lot of things that have changed, but that 4,000 gives us that buffer that we need. And we also want to see those that are holding on to those, to those entitlements to have that dialogue with people that come in with, with new opportunities. And like the mayor said, that she'd be interested in seeing diversity in some of the projects that we bring forward.
I also want to add to the conversation that, it was mentioned, but I want to emphasize that 60%, almost 60% of the total units are locked up and not being constructed since '04. That's a very high percentage. Second, by not increasing the units, you're not going to get any single-family homes, townhomes, affordable housing. We just, we won't get anything at all. And my third point is everyone has driven up and down federal highway and other areas on the east side, east of 95, that if you don't increase the units, it will remain the way it is. And I don't think the vision of the city is the current image of the city. Meaning, the vision we talk about is the work, the live, work, and play where there's people walking up and down federal, going to restaurants, going to different stores. And, and in order to get that foot traffic, you need to increase the number of units because right now we have a large number of units as hotels, but we also need those rentals and condos and townhomes closer to federal. So people are able to walk to restaurants, people are able to walk to other recreational places that they could go to, including our parks.
And I think I want to add real quick, if I may, through the mayor, one of the things that, that the rail team, Broward County Rail, one of the reasons that, that we did not get a rail stop in our city yet is the lack of density in our city center that includes the corridor of federal highway. So I think by being open to this, and if we really have that vision of live, work, play and getting people to get on public transportation and connecting to that last mile and having a rail stop in the city, we should be open. And once we get those units approved, then we need to, you know, perhaps have a secondary workshop and say, hey, which are the types of units based on what Commissioner Llewellyn had asked us to do, which is a citywide assessment of everything that we have, single-family apartments, townhouses, at what rates of affordability. But if we don't ask for that, we really, you know, create a place where there's no, no future development of any type.
Commissioner Amin?
Hi, thanks. So, you know, I was really waiting to hear what everyone had to say. And, you know, so to speak to kind of what Candido was saying about, you know, if we don't ask, we'll never get those townhouses. Well, I think the problem for, for me at least, is I just don't believe that we are going to get them. I mean, we've barely gotten them in the past and I just don't know that I believe that we are going to. And for me, it, in a way, it's a little bit of a hard sell to want to give the 4,000 when there's so many of the projects of the units I don't like. I don't think they're that good. And when I talk to the residents, they don't think they're that good. They don't want them. It's not, it's a no from them. So if you're going to be the voice of the people, and that's what the commissioners are supposed to be, you know, that's the administration and the Eleanors and the Corinns to be the brains of how this thing could look. But if you listen to what the residents say, they don't say, I don't, even I understand where you want to put the density in the RAC for a reason, to keep it out so you can have the neighborhoods stay neighborhoods. They say they don't even want that density. And in some of the reasons, you know, I don't know how solid they are and, but some of the reasons are good. They, they, they don't want it, they don't want the extra traffic, they don't want the extra people. They want it to be a little bit more scaled back. They want it to be more laid back. They want it to be less dense, not just in the residential neighborhoods, but throughout the city. And that's valid. If you're here and you pay taxes and you live here, you're allowed to not want that. And so overwhelmingly, that's what I hear. So overwhelmingly, in one category, I have the residents who say they don't want it for various reasons. And then in my personal category, I don't think all the projects are that good. They definitely don't meet any, you know, most of them don't meet the standards that I would like to think are coming for building and development down the line. So what, well, I understand what Candido is saying, you know, sort of missed opportunities and to speak to what the city manager said about the rail and things like that, about, you know, if we were more dense, you would have had a shot at the rail. I do get that and I hear that. And I think that's probably valid and correct. I just don't know that that's the path that the city collectively, the people want to go on. And it's probably not the path that I want to go on. So that's my two cents on it.
Thank you. I just want to clarify the whole thing with the rail. There were a lot of reasons why we were not considered. Density was not the number one reason. I think the number one reason was probably connectivity to, you know, to be able to get our neighborhoods, get the, our residents from the neighborhoods to the rail. And then we were competing against the airport, which is very, very difficult to do. I don't care how dense we are. It's very difficult to compete against the air, I'll call it the Dania Beach Airport, but the full lot of the airport. And another thing, I want us to really pay attention to. And another thing, I, I want us to really pay attention to the comments that are made for the newly elected officials for as long as you all have been on, but for the rest of us and including the vice mayor. I know he's been on for, you know, before I was here. When you, when you hear these projects, when they come to their neighborhoods, do you not hear how much pushback there is? I mean, we just had a whole extra study done right there with the last project. I don't remember what it's called, right there by the casino, talking about traffic of a three-story project. And that's, what was that, seventy-eight units? And so just, I just want you to imagine, that's seventy-eight units. And now in a small area, we potentially can be adding an additional, not even of what's not developed yet. And what's not built yet, but what has been approved. And what's not, what has not been approved is the twelve hundred or, if you take away the four hundred, I guess, assuming that we're going to allocate those units to Spirit, eight hundred and something else more units. Imagine the traffic. Imagine the traffic nightmare that, that is going to continue to happen. My, my biggest issue is this, we don't have a traffic plan that will help US one. Corinne, what is US one at a level F, D?
Yes, it is, it's identified as failing. We're in a transportation exemption area knowing that there's buildings on each side that prohibit the expansion of it. So the idea there is to encourage transit through bike, pedestrian, bus, potentially train.
Correct. We see how that's working right now. It's at a level F. So we don't have it's all together with our transit to even make it feasible. Like, we're talking about not being able to make a left turn on this street or that street and, you know, people off of Fortieth having to sit in their homes for thirty minutes before they can turn right or left, four thousand more units? I, I can't imagine, a lot of people are leaving the city of Dania Beach. Because, you know, we hear the same things. If we read social media, if we talk to our residents, if we campaign, we've heard overdeveloped, it's overdeveloped, it's overdeveloped, it's overdeveloped. And we don't, we hear plans that are coming in from the NPO. We hear those things. There's no plan that is coming in that is going to help federal highway. As Corinne just said, we cannot widen, we can't widen that street. So guess what's going to happen? They take the neighborhood streets. And we're gonna continue to ask for more speed humps. And the city manager is gonna say, we can't put a speed hump of every, every street. And we're gonna have to find different ways to traffic coming. I, I, I really would like a different type of traffic plan. So we can understand how adding all of these people, I mean, add all of the units that have not been built yet that we currently have and potentially another four thousand units. How are we going to get out of our homes? And this is not citywide. This is just in the regional activity center. So I have a major concern going to ask for not exceed four thousand, four thousand. And I have not heard one mention of any of those units being low-income units. The affordability in Broward County is amongst the top two or three in the country. Not the state of Florida, not our, the, the country. So I hear affordable housing. We all know affordable housing is not affordable. We hear market rate housing. We all know market rate housing is not affordable. We, we have these projects that are coming online that are like seven hundred square feet for a studio that's going to be eighteen hundred dollars. What are we doing for our residents that cannot afford to live there? And then we're doing this in an area like the CRA. Because I, because I, if I read right, I, I read on one of those slides that if this is not approved, no other development can happen in the CRA area. But we're gonna add four thousand more and not one goes towards low-income housing. It's just a hard, it's, it's, it's really difficult for me to even fathom in my right conscience being able to look a resident in their eyes and not have a plan for the congestion that we already have, something that is currently working in place and then go back to the county and ask for four thousand units. I, I just, go ahead, Corinne, you can cut me off.
Sorry. So regarding the affordable housing issue, I can tell you of the approximately two thousand units that are of interest. One of, you know, the project next to City Hall parking garage is an affordable housing project. If we don't have units available for that project, it will be put on hold.
I'm asking for low income.
And we anticipate that when we go forward asking for, right, asking, when we, we anticipate moving forward, asking for the four thousand units that the county and the state will make us set aside a portion, potentially ten, fifteen percent of those units specifically for affordable housing. So I, I believe that's going to be built into any expansion that we get.
Mayor, that's what I was gonna add, that part of that equation.
Is low income versus affordable housing are two completely different things, correct, Corinne?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Low income versus affordable housing are two different things, correct?
They're different categories, yes. They, they hit different markets.
Low income. I haven't heard one thing for low income. Affordable housing was, when I asked the one gentleman with the one project, what was the difference between the market rate and his affordable housing was fifty dollars. So I, I, I don't buy the whole affordable housing thing. And, you know, when the county comes and says ten to fifteen percent of your project has to be affordable housing and it's only a fifty dollar difference, that's wordplay for me. But where is the low income component? Is there anything in any of the, the, the research or what you put together that includes low income?
That can be a component of the, the set aside in this and any replenishment of the rack that happens. We can set that aside. We can set our own priorities if we had the units to do that with.
Okay, go ahead, city manager. I know you're trying to speak.
Oh, mayor, that's exactly what I wanted to say, I think. What, what we're doing, we're, we're doing two things that we've never done before. Number one is the transit and mobility study that the city hadn't done. That we just presented from the Coradino group. Now, mind you, and, and we're just looking at the transit of moving people around in, in the city shuttles. But the, the transit and the transportation study, because we're dealing with COVID, we're not getting like real numbers. So what Corinne is saying is by putting a number out there, we have a year and a half. And within that year and a half, we're going to complete our transit and our transportation. Within that year and a half, before that, we're going to complete our entire assessment or, or inventory of everything we have in our city and how we rank in Broward County. Do we need more affordable housing? Do we need more low-income housing? Do we need more workforce housing? And where we allocate the, those different buckets, you all can do based on the inventory. But once we have that inventory, you can see citywide, not just in the rack. We could do the rack separately, but where we're at in all the different categories. And then you, we can have a separate workshop and say, hey, either those four thousand, or the state may say, hey, not four thousand, three thousand or two thousand nine hundred. Out of those numbers, then we can look at our inventory and say, let's add twenty percent here or let's add thirty percent here. But if we don't at least have a number to work with, which we know it's going to be chopped down by the state, we won't even be able to have the dialogue of adding the, the different types of housing options.
I understand that part. I just, I, I, there's no way I can support the number four thousand and, and sleep well at night and represent the residents. There's just no way. So I don't know what the rest of the commission wants to do or where we go from here. I'm definitely, I understand that we may need more units. I understand that. I'm definitely not going with four thousand. That's just my opinion. So I guess the rest is up to the rest of the commission. What does that mean, Commissioner Davis? What happened?
Vice mayor's been trying to raise his hand, I think.
Oh, I only concede four. I'm so sorry.
You blocked me out again. All you women blocked me out. Yeah, about ten times. Okay. All right. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you my feeling about some of this stuff, okay? And it has a, it has a little, I'm sorry, hang on a second. Let me get my dogs quiet. Can you quiet my dogs, please? Okay, anyhow, you know, going back to twenty fourteen when I was elected into, into the office, I had made a statement that I was for, to, to do building, to get our city in a different area, different zones, so on. So as we started to do this, a lot of the people came up to me, the residents came up to me, as Commissioner Robbins said. The residents came up to me and they said, you know, you be careful what you're doing. And I took a lot of flak over it for four years while I was in office. Funny thing, I didn't get reelected. And I didn't get reelected because they didn't like it. But you know what happened after two years? After two years, they all thanked me over Daniel Point and they reelected me in twenty, in twenty twenty. So not all the residents feel that way. And not all the residents don't want us not to improve our things. A lot of them are saying, I like this. I, it's a feeling of the city not being, they don't want, they want the sleepy city. A lot of people don't want it. I understand a lot of them do. I've been here all my life. So that's just one thing, okay? As far as affordable housing goes compared to low-income housing, I understand all that. But any developer that's out there is not, that's, that's gonna put money out. In today's world, especially because the prices of everything are so high, which we discussed in the CRA meeting, it's almost impossible in Dania Beach or any other city of Dade, Broward or Palm Beach to build that housing because the product is, the, the, the materials are so high to be able to build a, a low-income housing unless we create some type of a thing that, to be able to, I don't know, to design some kind of townhouses or, or smaller homes or something that we could do with. Because the developers, any developers just won't spend the money to do it because it's not affordable for them to do it, to put low income in it. It'll be a lost, a lost return. I mean, I, I know because I'm looking into doing stuff like that. I'm into a little bit of development. I, I check the prices and I can see what the rents are and the insurances are and the flood insurance and stuff like that. It's almost impossible to, to build in this area that, I mean, I'm sure we can figure out a way. But if we stop and don't put four thousand and ask the four thousand units that, that we're asking for, you know, we come to stalemate. Like Candido said, everything's gonna come to a screeching halt. I think that we should believe in our, in our, the people that go to school to, to design and develop and, and and the water management or, and our staff, I think we should believe in them. And I think they said if it does, goes there, they don't think it's gonna pass, then that, that'll drop it to thirty-five hundred, thirty-three hundred, or whatever it is. And then we work out the other things about the, the low income. And, and mayor, I understand you with the, that I really do. And I, and I wish there was an easy solution for it. If you have that solution, I'm ready to hear it. But I don't, you keep asking for it, but you don't have the solution. Let me finish. But the thing is, I'm trying to tell you.
Housing, the housing authority and not necessarily whatever, but the housing authority, I know a lot of people who have their properties and single-family properties and they're, they go through HUD or the Housing Authority because guess what?
Where are you gonna build them? Where are you gonna build them? What property we can use?
What do you mean? We just built Saratoga. That was one of them.
I know, but you're talking about you want more, you want more low-income housing. I'm asking you a simple question. Where do you want to build this? Where do you want to build this? Tell me, the people that own the property or the people.
Allocating four thousand units will get you. You have projects, the only one project that has been since two thousand and four was that project that has two hundred units. And it's another project, I think that was a little further than that, that had two units. Other than that, everything else has been since probably twenty twelve, twenty four.
Where are you gonna build them? That's my point. I, I mean, who's gonna buy the property and build them and spend the money? They can't make anything off of it. How are they gonna do it?
They're, that developed the Saratoga crossings. The, the city of Dania Beach didn't do that in the Dania housing.
I understand, yeah, but that's only a couple of hundred units. We're talking about a thousand units that you're looking for, five hundred. Where are we gonna build them?
Well, I'm trying to give you, I don't want to hear the answer. There are ways that you can go about doing it.
And that's why we're talking, I'm not yelling at you, mayor.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, we're not yelling.
Okay, I'm just trying to explain that. I mean, I'm, I understand where you're coming from. If we, if we had those answers, it'd be easier to understand why we shouldn't allow it. But if we don't, if we don't allow them to at least proceed and take the twelve to eighteen months to have these units available. Whatever, a developer came in and had an area that he wanted to put a thousand units of, of low-income housing. Then we only have eight hundred left. Now what do we do? See, so I mean, there's always the possibility, but the, the pot's there, the pot is there, then we have the opportunity to bring in the project. I, I listen, I invented, I invented, I just telling you, I think if we should allow them to move forward and let, let our pros take care of it. That's all.
Yeah, it's healthy dialogue and we do have subject experts, but we, I, we also were elected. You, you did a lot of hard work to be elected. This is not just, we signed the application and, and signed up for this job to be a subject matter expert. There are subject matter experts everywhere. But it's a different responsibility when you're elected and you held, you have to hold yourself accountable for what you campaigned for. And that's all, that's all I'm saying. Don't have a plan. Now, if we have a plan, guess what? Maybe we should go and explore other ways of if we could put something here or there or whatever, but to just say, okay, well, just go. At least we'll have it in a pot. The pot is gonna be gone really, really quickly. It's, it's, it's going to be gone. And I mean, I could go to the county and ask for something different, but four thousand, that's just not, that's just not, not my ask. And, you know, there are many developers that do a lot of great work, charity work, philanthropy, all those types of things. And you see them building these great centers and these great developments. And we're, we're asking these questions, but we haven't really sought out the answers. I mean, I haven't. I'll speak for myself. I haven't sought out those answers to say, you know what, I want to see a feasibility study before I go and ask for these units. That's what Commissioner Llewellyn, I believe, said. She said, you know, maybe we should wait. And so what if, like, like Eve said, if there's a moratorium until we can really feel good about what we are asking for, I'm okay with that. All we see right now, the only birds in the sky are the cranes. That's it. We are developing and developing and developing and we have enough development over the next couple of years that we're gonna constantly see development. It's not like we're gonna just be at this big hall. But I'm just not all in for going to just ask for something because we, because I won't have to share water with someone else and it drips out of my faucet. I, I want to be able to be comfortable in the city that we live in. We live in this city. A lot of our staff don't live in the city, don't live in this exact city. And so I just want you to just put yourself, staff members and everyone, if this is your neighborhood where it's already a lot of development that's happening all around, and then to go ask for four thousand more, don't have an answer for transportation, don't have a feasibility study yet. I just think that's a, that's not, that's not what I would support doing. I think we need to have everything else in order before we can go there because we have to answer to our constituents. Some of you are there, they're gonna run again. You don't have the answer to your constituents. This is not just a, okay, staff said it and let's go with it. Eve?
Hi, I just, not to interfere with your discussion, just wanted to say you can put in regulations relating to, let's say, more of the low-income housing versus affordable housing or workforce housing as part of your requirements or designation of certain number of units. I was the general counsel for the Housing Authority for the City of Miami Beach for, God, since two thousand and one until I left this about fifteen years. And I found on Miami Beach, the property is so expensive, it was so hard for a housing authority to be able to develop any low-income housing there. We actually did it. We did it several times. And actually, one of the projects that I worked on is going online this year. I'm very proud of that. But it's only like twenty units for, you know, less than twenty units and it's costing like five million dollars. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Part of the problem is the federal government is only allocating so many funds for the affordable units. And I, specifically, I mean, low-income units. Because it's a, you know, to get the low-income units online, a certain percentage is being paid by the federal government. And under the last administration, that number was shrinking tremendously. I don't, I'm not up to speed on what this administration is doing. But under the prior administration, those numbers were not there and the funding wasn't there. And that's a huge problem facing not just your community, our community, Florida, but the entire country. It's, it's a huge, huge problem of finding the funding to be available. But there is a way of allocating certain number of units for that purpose. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Eve, let me ask you, the, the empowerment zones from the last administration, is that still in place or was that removed by the current administration?
It's still in place. That's still in place. You had to have already applied for that and gotten your designation, but that's still in place. Actually, a very good incentive. I know of quite a few projects, you know, that were in the city of Miami that went through and are just, they're booming.
Yeah, because those are, we, we had some, some conversations with some people that were looking at some areas in College Gardens that were going to try to take advantage of what the last administration, federal administration did with, with the empowerment zones. So.
That was a huge, huge project. And that started under Obama and then went through with Trump and the Trump administration. And it, you know, in, in Liberty City. And it, you know, in Liberty City and places like that, there are some really good projects moving forward. But you had to have been in the know and applied several years ago to get into it.
Yeah, because I know Miami was able to take advantage of a lot of cool projects through the empowerment zones.
Yeah, I actually worked on a couple of those projects in the city.
Okay, so to try to just move this forward, I know it's six o'clock. I, I guess the city has made a recommendation. And we can, is this a workshop? This is a workshop. So we, we really cannot vote for anything. So I don't, I don't know where to tell you, city manager, where to go from here. You've kind of heard all of our, you know, our ideas and our questions and our concerns and our feedback. And I don't know if anyone else has anything else to add to the conversation. I can't see if y'all raised your hand, just speak out at this point.
I just wanted to add real quick that the, the projects that the NPO deals with through the county have to do with infrastructure and issues involving traffic and, and things like that. So there are other things going on outside of the city that are dealing with, with these sort of projects. And my understanding is, if I'm incorrect, if I'm wrong, Corinne, that we, yes, there, there needs to be a plan. We do agree that there needs to be a plan in place, that's what we're going to do. But allowing additional units or making the recommendation for additional units will allow us to move forward with creating a plan and then limiting what we want from those 4,000 units. Is that fair or am I wrong?
The, the, I think the intentions and desires of the commission can be something that can occur separate from moving forward with the units, especially if it's something more specific as to how they get allocated or more specific as to establishing different transportation options or routes or something. We can move forward with the request for the replenishment of the rack and those other more specific housing, transportation type issues. And then once the, we finally get approval for the replenishment in 12 to 18 months, then you can kind of apply those projects. They can kind of overlay on each other. And then once we have the units, we can assign them on the basis of these other studies and, and priorities that the city commission has set.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, and before I, I, I would like for you to, you know, take one more round with, with your colleagues so we can get better direction. What I wanted to ask you is ask Corinne, and I think she gave me a little bit more clarity. If, if we ask for four and they give us three, or we ask for four and they give us 3,500, that doesn't put us in a predicament that if these studies come and we, and, and we want to subtract what they have approved, that doesn't mean that whatever the county, the state or who is what we have to do, we can, we can scale back on, on those numbers. But we can't, we cannot add if we don't put the numbers out there, but we can subtract.
Being born to reason, I want to add 4,000 units. I don't even want that to be a possibility. And 4,000 units east of federal, east of I-95. Wait, is east of I-95? I don't, I don't even want to add 4,000 units. If you ask the residents around here, which is who, who is going to impact the most, they wouldn't even want to add 3,000. They only, I, I don't know how else to put it and I don't know what number would be feasible, honestly. I know it's not 4,000. I know if I go and I knock on these doors of the REC, the people who live here and I, and I explain that to them, they will probably slam the door in my face. So I understand that we can allocate the units, but allocating 4,000 units is still 4,000 units. You know what I mean? And saying, okay, we're going to shoot at 4,000, but they give us 3,500 is not 4,000. 3,500 units to be added. If you go talk to our residents, listen, let's put it out for the residents to decide. Let's put it out to see, not to decide, I'm sorry, for, for us to get their feedback. Let's, let's, let's listen to them. Let's invite them and let's listen to what they have to say. These, these are the people who are going to be impacted by our decision making. And I just don't think that 4,000, 3,500, 3,000, that's, that's a lot of additional units of units that we haven't even developed the amount that we just approved. We just approved, what, 20% in the last, how many months? That Corinne just said, like that's, it's, it's crazy for me. It's, for me, it's crazy. So you, we can go back on another round. I'm not comfortable at all until I see what's feasible for this area for me to even go and ask the county for. Because what we do right now, the groundwork that we lay, we, we may not be here when the other projects come. I know I prob, oh, sorry. I know I probably won't be here, but elections come and go. You never know if you're going to get reelected or not. And it'll be someone else sitting in this seat that will have a different vision than what we all, all five of us had. And so it's our jobs as policyholders and decision makers to lay that foundation in the groundwork for whoever's going to come after us. So they'll have a model to, to lead by. But if we should say $4,000, 4,000 units and the county gives us 4,000 units and then we're not at office, everyone knows, three votes, it can go whatever way, you never know. And you'd have no input in that because 4,000 is 4,000, however it's allocated.
Mayor, we just, we just need to know from, from your colleagues as a whole so we can go one direction or not or lower the number, whatever, you know.
Put it on the agenda and let's vote on it next time it comes up.
Well, you don't have to vote on it. You can just give us a, a consensus. We can just gain a consensus. I mean, I, I don't know.
But after the consensus.
We just need to.
After the consensus.
To jump in and guide us. I'm sorry, Mayor.
After the consensus, will it be on the agenda?
I, I don't know. Eve, Tom, can somebody jump in and guide us?
Oh, sorry. You can do a consensus or you can ask to have it brought back for your formal motion. You still need to bring the zoning in progress to you anyhow.
I would like to be able to vote on it.
Exactly, that's why I'm asking it. Will it have to, okay, so whatever consensus is now, we'll get the consensus of one way or the next. If it passes the consensus, then I guess it'll be formally on an agenda.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that staff should bring forward the same question, maybe on the 28th under discussion and possible action so that there can be a vote and identify how staff proceeds with the, in terms of the replenishment of the rack.
I guess after we see what the consensus is up here now. So I'll go down. I think the first person is Commissioner Davis. Are you in favor of, or do you give consensus for the 4,000 units?
It's just never that black and white for me. What I would like to see, Corinne said they were almost done with the feasibility study with the water and all of that coming back. I would like to have that part finished and then I would like to vote on it.
Okay. Commissioner Llewellyn, are you in favor? Do we, you give your consensus for the 4,000 units?
What I'd like to know, and I'm still not clear from what Tom said, do, if we, if we give consensus to move it forward, does that mean that it's going to come before us as a vote on a consent agenda or any other agenda as some sort of a resolution? Or is it just a matter of we give consensus and they, and you go forward?
You would formalize the consensus. You'd have it on for discussion of possible action. There'll be a formal motion in the regular commission meeting, motion to support 4,000 request. Vote on that and now it's a formal matter. We're just trying to get an idea of whether you, there's three people that want to at least do this to go to the 28th meeting.
Okay, I, I can't hear you very well, so I'm not sure what you said.
It's to bring, it's to bring it. It's the idea is to bring, whatever happens today, if there are three of you who wish to bring this for a discussion of possible action, September 28th meeting, Corinne will put an agenda item together to do that. You would have a formal motion then to proceed with an application to state in the county for 4,000 or whatever the motion is approved to be. Tonight is just, just tonight is just the three of you that wish to do that because it doesn't, we haven't really had a number.
But that's not my question. My question is, suppose there is consensus to move this item forward, does that mean that it still ends up on an agenda down the road to vote one way or the other on it? Or is it just a matter of consensus and it's done?
No, I think everybody wants to have a formal vote on it. So it's a consensus tonight?
Can I try? Can I try to answer? Okay, I think what I, we're asking for, what staff is asking for tonight is direction for staff to move forward. We don't need to vote on this if everyone says, yes, it's a great idea, go forward and ask for more units, then we'll go forward and prepare that, that feasibility. Even if that happens, that, that formal action will have to come before the city commission and approve it. It's an amendment to our comprehensive plan and it will require three, it requires planning and zoning board recommendation. It requires, it's an ordinance, it's going to require city commission approval. It's got to go to the county, we got to transmit it to the state, it's got to come back to the commission. So you're, you have an opportunity to get your hands on this again, for sure.
So, so if we are simply moving it forward, then it's going to come up again. There is going to be another presentation, there will be further discussion on it before we actually vote on it, correct?
Yes, and we'll have more details at that point, yes.
And, and, and let me just weigh in, moving it forward would also trigger the feasibility study.
Okay. All right. Move forward doesn't have to be with the 4,000 units because if you move forward with this, what the consent agenda item or the discussion item will be, will be the recommendation for the 4,000 units. I think that's where it's getting lost. I don't, I don't want to just say, oh, we're giving consensus to support the 4,000 units because as you can see, everyone isn't comfortable with just supporting the 4,000 units. And that's what the, that's what it would read because that's what the discussion is about. The discussion is about the recommendation of staff for the 4,000 units. So if there's consensus right now, that consensus is going to say, you support the 4,000 units without having all of the other details that we are requesting or, or that we need to make that decision.
I don't think that's what is being decided here. That's what's being decided down the road, what gets in front of us at the commission. What we're being asked to do is to say whether or not we want to move it forward to an agenda item so that they can do a feasibility study, they can have, get more information for us, present, do a presentation to us. It could change down the road. It's not a matter of us saying, yes, we're in favor of 4,000 units or no, we're not in favor of 4,000 units. It's a matter of saying, are we in favor of going forward with the feasibility study to see if we can actually even support 4,000 units? If that's the case, which is what I'm understanding. And if that's the case, then I am in favor of doing that. I don't see the point in playing this by putting it on a discussion and possible action to have further discussion when we're going to have, when we're going to have discussion anyway when it's an agenda item.
Corinne, I have a question, point of clarification. When you ask for consensus to move forward, what exactly are you asking consensus to move forward with?
I'm looking for commission direction that you agree we want to replenish the units. We're recommending 4,000. There does need to be a feasibility study to make sure that, that we can accommodate 4,000. But we need to know that the city support, the commission supports our actions in doing that investigation and moving that application forward.
Thank you. So that is for 4,000, correct?
I got a question for you, Mayor, really quickly.
Okay, I just want, she answers that.
I got you.
4,000.
If we change the, if we change the dialogue and say up to 4,000 and that we have an opportunity after the feasibility study to drop it back to our choice at the meeting that we have, as the, the feasibility study comes back and it says, you can do 3,500. Let's say we turn around that time and say, well, you know, we want 2,500. At least we have an option to set a number. Is that a possibility?
Yes.
Oh, Vice Mayor, all right.
Well, it's still, it's still a, but still a possibility.
It's a compromise.
That's your opinion and you.
I'm compromised too. That's why I want.
You can say it anywhere you want. My understanding is that this is an opportunity. Can I please, I'm voting.
I can't see anything. Well, you already put a yes, we're moving on. We're moving on to the next person. So we're moving on to Commissioner, Commissioner Otman.
Are you saying my name?
Yes, I'm trying to. So we're moving forward. Commissioner Otman, are you giving your support to put on the agenda or whatever, the consensus for staff's recommendation of the 4,000 units? Up to 4,000 units?
No.
Vice Mayor, are you, are you putting?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Oh, wait a minute, Commissioner Davis.
Yes, up to 4,000 to move it forward. I, I just, now that Corinne has re-explained it and the Vice Mayor has made a compromise, I'm comfortable with having it go up to that amount. And if we need to change it, if we decide that we want less at a later date when it actually comes before the commission as an actual discussion and possible action item, then I'm, I'm good with moving forward today. Thank you.
Awesome, and mine is a no. So you have your three that gives a consensus. Now, Corinne, are you now going to add this as an agenda item that we can formally vote on?
That's going to come much later down the line when we have put together the data, the feasibility study, the information that we need to then share with the county. Before that sharing happens, it will be presented to the commission. It'll be presented to the planning and zoning board for a recommendation and then the city commission. Yes, but that's going to take us some time to put that information together.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
I do have one more request because my recommendation was twofold. The second is regarding the zoning in progress or the moratorium, some temporary hold on allocation of units so that staff and can talk about, can explore and bring forward to the commission some sort of way to prioritize the allocation. Does the commission support us in, in moving forward with that?
Does anyone not support it? Please speak out. Okay, so I'm assuming, let me swipe through, everyone is in support of that.
Very good, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any other comments on this?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all for your time. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, good night.
Night.